I stepped on the power out of here.
Is it dead?
Yeah, because it's charged.
Did it get locked up? Do you get enough with stuff that's?
I'm gonna go get my charger.
You need a, he, she's gonna give me the plug.
It was still bad.
Plug plug.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you need, I don't have one of those.
But you need the small one. Then you have the oval, the C.
You can get stuck in the stairwell, will you?
We'll take this, you know. This is it. Is it because stuff charges faster through different stuff? Or is that because we, um, applesauce thing, you know? They should ask the guy over there.
Coral.
I said they should ask Coral. Uh, yeah, yeah, it's all good. Maybe slide down to what we have. Okay. So we are streaming tonight, right? You know that, maybe more your cohort here.
All right.
But, uh, please identify yourselves, right? Uh, and your project and what you're requesting. Um, you have approximately thirty minutes for your presentation this evening. So I will set a timer for twenty-five minutes. So if that goes off, we need to wrap some things up. Uh, I believe you had a few questions submitted to you in advance. If you wouldn't mind trying to weave that into your presentation, that would be greatly appreciated. And with that said, when you're ready to begin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Dan Byer with the Eats Group.
I'm Matt Boyer with Washington Township, uh, Water Authority, Sewer, Sewer Authority.
And we're here to present the Lagoon Sledge Removal Project.
And down as it been?
Down as it been.
Would you have guessed that?
I'm sorry, dude.
Would you have guessed that the down was good ones?
He was here last week.
Oh, that's right.
Counterintuitive, you know, the engineer says, let me fix that.
Yes.
I'll hold it upside down.
I'll hold it upside down. So Washington Township Authority plays an important role within Washington Township by providing wastewater services for the community. Uh, and it tends to apply for removal of the sludge. Which is an estimated amount of forty thousand gallons of sludge in one of the two lagoons located at the wastewater treatment plant. The lagoons collect wastewater from the sanitary sewer collection system and is in need of sludge removal. Uh, project's important to the community and will benefit Washington Township in the county by ensuring that they can provide adequate and dependable wastewater collection and treatment services to their customers. Uh, estimated cost is seventy-five thousand dollars. And also the request that they're asking for is seventy-five thousand dollars from the local share municipal grant program. So the wastewater treatment plant was constructed in nineteen ninety-six. And since then, the lagoon was pumped out partially two times. So looking for a full pump out of the lagoon with this money. So the solution would be to have one of the lagoons sludge completely removed. And it's anticipating to be approximately ten to twenty pumper trucks removing the sludge from the lagoon.
And then where does it go?
So they would haul that to a, uh, treatment plant to press any of the water out of that or it could, and then they would take that sludge that's deep watered to a landfill or an area that's approved to accept the sludge.
Okay.
So the outcome of that, the authority would top priority of the project for their sanitary sewer system. Uh, and it's needed just to maintain the water quality parameter set by DEP. So this is showing the lagoons. These other areas, the, the green, that's algae on the wastewater treatment plant. What happens, there's aerators on here. It takes the, the clean water over to these areas. And then it goes into a small building here that has a UV disinfection system within it. So the two lagoons have aerators on here. And this one is the one that is being requested to have the sludge being removed from that one.
So you have two lagoons, you're requesting to pump one. Has the other one ever been pumped?
It, it has not been. So the, if there's money left over with this, we would like to pump sludge out from the other one also. So in the last, since nineteen ninety-six, they've only been partially pumped out.
What's the ideal, every ten years or is it not measured that way?
It depends on the flows coming in.
Okay.
But would anticipate, like, if these are cleaned out, it would probably last another twenty years. As an, an estimate for a, for a full removal, fifteen to twenty years.
And then you, you want to do a full removal, you never want to do a partial, right?
It would be preferred just to do the full removal in lieu of partial. You'd have some savings there with hiring people to come in.
Okay.
And this is just a photo of the, the again. Uh, this is the, the aerator on top and what that does.
I thought they were cunnings.
No fishing on these.
Some different class stuff.
And the part of that, keep, keep odor down, keep your aerator, keep the odors down.
This is a really unique situation for sewage. It, it's only one of, I believe, two or three in the state of Pennsylvania.
Okay.
And it is unique because we've all driven by sewage treatment plants and they don't smell the best. But the system out here, um, we actually have really no malodors being produced. It's all kind of like Mother Nature taking its course through the, the whole system.
So are they homes in the upper part of that?
They're all homes.
So the day you said you're pumping it out.
Right here's the school system right there.
Okay.
And all the water's actually treated and returned back to the creek.
Yeah, but it goes through a, a wetland. So there's a, a small building in this area that has a UV disinfection system. So little light bulbs, it kills the germs afterwards. Then it flows into this marsh or wetland area. Then it just float like seeps into the stream from there.
Okay, so the day or week that you're sludging it, will the neighbors smell that then?
I doubt, so with the, I, I might doubt that it'd be generated odor because it's already being aerated and they'll have back trucks that go in that suck from the bottom.
All right.
So Washington Township has not applied for any funds in the past. So this will be the first time that we're asking for funds and there's no, uh, experience of any fraud.
Washington Township Authority.
Washington Township Authority. And they go through, they have annual audits to make sure there's no theft of any funds coming in. If we, if they did receive the funds, uh, they would have to go through and still want to go through with the project. Maybe some rate increases potentially, uh, if it's not funded via a grant. And the, the biggest cost is the, the trucking and disposal at another wastewater treatment plant for them to process the sludge. Design, there's no design. I know from last week's, it was acceptable to go through Co-Stars. We did reach out to DEP. There's no permit required for pumping sludge, but they do want to be notified of when that process is taking place. So there's just some paperwork that needs done. It's not a formal permit that's required.
You have to probably track your waste.
That, that's correct. So you have to keep track of, the hauler would keep track of that. And anyone accepting that it'd be weighed for how much sludge is removed from that process.
So your application has a section where it says, you know, project quotes. I think it has quotes, but I don't see a quote, I see an opinion. Do you, have you received any quotes at all?
Did reach out to a supplier who's on Co-Stars to get a quote. And they gave some, like, I think it was four hundred fifty dollars a ton is what was estimated. So it's not known how much sludge is in there because of the water over it. So it hasn't been measured. So there is an unknown of how much sludge needs to be removed. But going off of past records, when it was partially pumped out twice in the last twenty years, estimated some, uh, tonnage or volume from that.
Do you guys see much growth?
Minimal growth in, in the area.
Minimal growth. You have the middle school with the population with the children. You know, that's, that's probably our biggest customers, so to speak.
Are you not expecting new housing developments to be built anytime soon?
Not that, not that I'm aware of. Uh, it's, it's all kind of locked down to farmland right now.
So there, there is a potential for growth, that a farm would sell off. But in, in the past five years, you've seen minimal growth for the area. Okay, so, yeah, we can go over this. So have a thing from Klein's Septics with an estimate of seven thousand five hundred seventy dollars per day to remove and transport sludge. And again, that's per day. They're not sure how long it might take them. We got different quotes, some are by the ton and some are saying a daily rate.
Here's basically everything.
Depends how far they take it.
Yeah, we only took it down two feet. The last time it was.
How far do you have to haul it?
I, I'll read this over. This is from the secretary from one of the meetings. On November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the authority accepted Klein's Septics estimate of seven thousand five hundred seventy dollars per day to remove and transport sludge from the lagoons. The board also approved forty-five thousand dollars to cover any amount over the estimate plus any change orders. On December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at the authority meeting, operator Neil Harris reported that after water was pumped off the vacu- vacu-
Vaculated.
Vaculated lagoon, Klein's removed three tankers per day from each lagoon. This was done for four days totaling thirty-six thousand gallons. The sludge blanket was lowered from four feet to two feet. So that has basically only half. This removal should hold the sludge blanket for approximately three to five years. Ultimately, the lagoons will need a total clean out. And this action will, will require a permit modification with DEP. So.
Are they lined with plastic?
Uh, a rubber, like a, kind of like a rubber roof on this.
It's lined with some sort of.
And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, the sludge process, I think they're blowing air. They're agitating with air and then vacuuming it.
There could be a, a backdrop.
Back truck with a pump. But basically, the last time we did it, we incurred that cost. And we only removed two out of the four feet that's in the sludge.
So once they pump it out and the truck drives away, do they own it?
Yes.
If they till it over, it's not your fault.
But that's the responsibility of, uh, trans, the trucking company transporting it.
Okay, I see.
So schedule wise, it's, no, again, we followed up with DEP. They're not requiring any permits. So it can start sooner, as soon as it's, uh, money's granted, the project can start. And pumping it out, a week to two weeks, they could pump everything out and it could be, the contract could be through Co-Stars, not have to go through the bidding process. Uh, some questions that came in that were answered. The applicant states that Washington Township Authority and Washington Township have cooperated and supported each other on multiple projects. Uh, so Washington Township provided a loan to the authority for the authority's Pennvest project. The township's roadmaster provides the authority with maintenance assistance on their generator and aerator. And the township also helps the authority with mowing and trimming at the treatment plant. So there's a good relationship between the, the township and the authority. Other funds that are being sought for the project, at, at this time, no other funds are being, sourced for the project. How will Washington Township Authority proceed with this project if it does not receive local share grant funds? The authority would have to come up with a way for paying for the project, either through loans or user rates being increased. The status of the design, uh, following up with DEP, they're not going to require anything. So no design is required for the project. So moving along a, ahead of schedule of what was originally provided. And then also going, since they're allowed to use Co-Stars, no formal bidding is required. So we don't have to prepare drawings to advertise the project. And what is the purpose slash urgency of the sludge removal? Uh, the purpose of the project is to remove the solids from the lagoon to provide adequate solid storage in the lagoon and to also have sewer flow control. Will this process need to be repeated? If so, when? The plant started in nineteen ninety-six and there were two partial cleanings since then. This is a proposed total cleaning for one of the two lagoons. And the process would be repeated in about fifteen to twenty years. And is the applicant performing any other improvements to the wastewater treatment plant? And how are those improvements being funded? Currently, there are no other major improvements being proposed at the treatment plant.
So the business of treating sewage, right, is a losing proposition, generally speaking, right? You have lots of lines that run places and you've got maintenance for those, et cetera.
You've got customers flushing grease down the.
Have lots of issues, right?
You've got lots of issues.
You, you've got a lot going on there. I mean, I mean, I think this county is very fortunate to have this body that is able to distribute money from gaining, uh, for revenue, right? And make recommendations to the, to the commissioners, right, to assist folks with things like this. But how could this, I mean, is there a way, I mean, I'm assuming your rates can't be increased, that there's just no real way to make that to function at efficiency for maintenance purposes? If that's what it's about.
And that's what it would come down to, user rates of, to pay for this. Without grant money, it would be increasing user rates. Even if they would get a loan, they'd have to pay that loan back. So you'd have to go back to the users to ultimately pay for any loans that would be obtained for this.
It's tough. Yeah, it's tough spot. I mean, because as you said, you've got to look and it's not going to be growing at any rate to, you know, for new users to be brought on to help offset some of the costs and stuff like that. And even if you do, then you extend your infrastructure, right? Um, so then there you have another issue, so I'll never answer you.
And, and it, it's a smaller, uh, community too. It's not ten thousand users paying for this. So even smaller sized projects has an impact on the users because of the number of customers.
And when you get a pump that goes down there, like twenty thousand dollars a piece. We've already had to replace those this year.
Do you all get much life out of your UV bulbs?
They get changed quite a bit.
How often?
Our, our, our operator would know exactly. I don't know exactly that, but that's, there's a schedule on those.
Do you guys end up with any faulty bulbs too? Like you put them in and you're like, wow.
I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of that. Anybody ever comments on that? Basically, everything's monitored every month. You know, at every meeting, there's a, he, we, he gives a, an operator's report on basically the flow coming in to the system and the, and the flow going out. And, um, and then again, the maintenance where these, the aerators need maintenance uh, and, and the UV.
Yeah, we just had, we, I served on these standards, we just wore forty. So we had to upgrade our UV system. That was just wasn't, you know, working out the way that we wanted it to. And it came a little long in the tooth. And, and we have had some issues with UV lamps not performing right, right, right away when you put them in as well. But that was under the old system and some of that, that's why it was.
Yeah, I, I, Neil would be the guy that would have the answer on that.
But I digress. Uh, any questions? Thank you very much. Good luck to y'all.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Williams Township? It is, Williams Township? Williams Township. Uh, did I read them all? I think they're actually, they have to do the one. They say they haven't fit it out yet. Oh, I thought it was a hundred and fifty pounds. Definitely, if it was under a rock, that would be.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a Washington Township that they're applying? Mm-hmm, maybe that's where I was looking. It means Washington Township Authority. Hello.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. So you gentlemen have a time slot for lots for thirty minutes for your presentation. Um, I'm going to set a timer for twenty-five minutes. Uh, the shots are going off, we need to wrap things up for the folks that are coming behind you. We are live streaming, the mic is to your right. So before you start your presentation, please identify yourselves, uh, who you're representing and your request. Whenever you're ready to start, okay? Where's yours?
Uh, my name's Jack Schaefer, uh, Williams Township Supervisor.
Chip Shuttlesworth, Williams Township Supervisor.
Um, thanks for having us tonight. Um, just presenting our, uh, application. Uh, pretty straightforward, uh, resurfacing some roads, uh, on the township. Looking for eighty-three thousand two hundred for grant. And, uh, we're going to put in forty thousand of our own liquid fuels tax money. I guess that's pretty simple. We're just repaving the roads. We've been, uh, repaving roads. Uh, we started in twenty nineteen. Uh, we used twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, fuels tax to complete about one point two miles of road. Uh, the cost of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars. In twenty twenty-two, uh, the township used twenty-one and twenty-two fuels tax to complete one point three miles. At a cost of roughly eighty thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars. Last year, which was the first year that, um, we incorporated, uh, uh, Grant In program. We used twenty-three, twenty-four fuels tax money, local share grant money, uh, of fifty-nine thousand one thirty-six from last year and fourteen thousand of our general funds. And we completed about one mile of, uh, street sections at a cost of, it's roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This, uh, last year, we identified two streets to do this summer. That totals about, uh, three quarters of a mile. Um, we plan to move forward the project regardless of what grant money we get. It's just depending on how much funds available, how big the project becomes. Right now, we already talked to one contractor that is going to be actually replacing some piping under the road. Before the paving starts, we want to replace the pipes before we do the paving. We don't want to cut up the road and put the pipes in.
What a great idea.
Yeah. Uh, so he will be doing that as soon as the weather breaks. Uh, that's going to be about twenty-five thousand dollars out of our general fund. Uh, we've all recommended to that.
You said twenty-five thousand?
About twenty-five thousand, yeah.
What is this, water or gas or?
Uh, it's drinks.
Okay.
So he's going to be doing that in the spring and then, uh, in April, uh, we submitting bid documents out uh, to all the little contractors. Uh, hopefully award that bid in, um, May. And then start the project, uh, probably in July or August. Uh, and like I said, we're, we're moving forward the project regardless of what grant money we get. If we get grant money, we do both, probably both the streets. If we don't get any grant money, we can probably do one of the streets.
So how many, after, let's just say hypothetically, you can get this part done. How many more miles of streets do you have to take?
Uh, we, we, we have identified, I don't know the mileage. Um, uh, I, we do have identified two more streets for twenty twenty-six. Uh, it'll be similar to this project. We have some piping to replace under the road. We most likely will do that with our general fund money. Uh, and then to two streets, uh, I'm going to put in a similar grant, uh, application for next year for two more. And that'll, that should cover then the west end of town. Uh, the east end of town, I think we have two, maybe two streets to do. So maybe another, well, two miles, two and a half miles of streets.
Two.
Hopefully. Wait, a, after these.
After these.
So like I said, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, just repaving. If we don't have enough money to do both streets, we'll just move, move one street to, to twenty twenty-six.
Do you ever have any roads where you can do that to foreign, foreign scan?
Township. I, I guess that's an option that we could do.
Then I mean, you might have a road that's not traveled much or maybe the residents wouldn't be happy. I don't know.
Uh, I, I wouldn't be happy. I wouldn't be happy driving on that stuff.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, the road, similar roads in question are pretty rough now. So it'd be hard to tar and chip them without doing some work on them anyway.
So that, that's, uh, I mean, that, that is the project, um, that we, that we have committed to. Um, like I said, depending on what, if any grant money we get, uh, will depend on how big the project ends up being.
Any questions?
No, it's really straightforward.
Yeah, nothing, nothing too fancy.
I, I guess I'll look over, is there any other places they could go for money, George? Would you know? So I don't know why I look to you, but I am for whatever reason, for paving of municipal.
Yeah, I mean, CDVG, um, they're probably to help you with that.
I'm just trying, I mean, because you're talking about paving a mile. Right, if he could get more money that, you know, the cost for mobilization and stuff like that would greatly reduce. It just seems like every year you're going to be paying that mobilization fee when you're talking on my whole road. But I mean, they could probably do easily all the roads that you need to do.
We'd have to look at their, look at their, uh.
I don't know. It's just a.
You guys, you guys are a problem.
Yeah, yeah, we've got multiple CDVG friends.
But that area where the road is though, how, on the residents in that area that are benefiting from the road? Like, are they low income?
Uh, I mean, mo- most, most of the residents in Williams Town, I would say, are low income. So there would be some residents that benefit from, from that. Yes, low income.
You could take a look at that. That program will open in August of next year.
Oh, yes.
Twenty twenty-five. Yes, just send me an email, I'll send you my card and we'll, you know, discuss it.
I should work with that, the D, CDVG stuff.
She's out there.
Yeah. I ordered her ass hurt a little bit.
You can take a look at it. Not a problem.
Yeah, that would be.
And, and again, I mean, the roads, the roads are, are in need of, of repair. They're not in desperate need of repair, so that's why we're kind of, we can like, pick, pick them a piece, you know.
Cost less if you're maintaining it, or just rebuild it, right?
Yes.
Do you have same calls out there?
Uh, no.
That's good.
Better than our calls.
I think there's one.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, George.
So, yeah, so they have them to a park.
There was a trail, a lot of these, uh, where you cut that shit, I think, on the trail. And early in the morning.
Yeah, flashers.
Take that tree. That's amazing, so did we ever tell us about the dude?
Now he has to further 24 hours.
Senator.
Yeah, because it's smooth.
All right, try to catch up here. Got some notes and. Williamstown area EMS. Would you want to?
Hawthorne SPE. Susquehanna Union Green.
Okay. Hopefully you take offense to that. Sorry. Do you want to name it?
No.
All the way around. We didn't start it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you guys. You got us for seven thirty. So we have you for 15 minutes for your presentation. I'll set a timer for 12, so if that goes off, we need to wrap things up because EMS folks will want to come in. And please identify yourselves, right? Um, and your project that you're associating with, who you represent. Speak loudly because we are streaming and the mic is to your right, in that direction. So whenever you're ready, you may start.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ralph Barton, um, and we're presenting the applicant. Uh, sorry. What's that? Got it. Thank you. Ralph Barton, um, uh, we're, uh, the applicant is Hawthorne SPE. Other developers, Susquehanna Union Green, and my colleague.
Nicole Conway, also presenting Hawthorne SPE.
And the, the development company, Barton Grouping is my company where I'm, uh, CEO. Um, we have a slide pack up here and I'm going to try and operate this thing. I'm not sure which one's up and down.
Down.
It's down and moving forward. Okay, great. Um, a little bit about the overall Susquehanna Union Green project and then the, um, and I'll mention a little bit about the, um, specific application here for, um, the seventy-five thousand dollar application for some of the park components. Um, Union Greens is a 58 acre master plan site, traditional neighborhood development. Um, the site is, has three sort of large components. About a third of the site is, uh, green space, formally planned, um, parks, green space, public amenities. About a third of it is, um, is master plan commercial space. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand total square feet, um, over, uh, over a number of buildings, of smaller buildings ranging from, you know, four to twelve thousand square foot. Uh, and, uh, also a, uh, future hotel. And then about a third of the site is residential. It includes, um, apartments, um, which totals, uh, I believe, two hundred and seventy-six apartments in total and then forty single family homes. So that's kind of just a rough overview of the, um, of the overall site. Um, this, the site was planned extensively, um, and closely, uh, in collaboration with Susquehanna Township in particular. Um, a lot of years and, and many, I don't know, maybe seventeen iterations, you know, refinements of the plan to get to where it is. And, and the result, we're really proud of it. It's a, it's a, it's a plan that I think has, um, just has a lot of momentum to it. And, uh, and the, and the, the result is that the Susquehanna Township's, um, uh, overall actual, um, the master plan for Susquehanna Township, uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, specifically cites the project as, um, the sort of community asset that will improve the township's overall design and character. And, um, so what, what we're doing, hopefully, the end result, when it's all done, it's going to be something that, uh, lasts, you know, long after, uh, our names are forgotten and, and the folks who worked on it are, you know, retired, buried, and so on and so forth. But the idea would be that a, that a town center, um, would, would continue to exist and it would be an important, um, central place for Susquehanna Township, a great sense of place. Um, the Susquehanna Township Comprehensive Plan, um, exists within the context of the county's comprehensive plan. Um, uh, one of the things we highlight is that, um, this, this application has to do with, um, some of the public amenities. They have the public parks for the project. And, um, and that those are the elements that are featured in both the township and the county comprehensive plan. Uh, the need for a publicly accessible park space. Um, I can highlight for you the three, uh, ma- the three large green spaces. Uh, I'll start at the top. At the top of the slide, you can see is the central green. Uh, the central green is, um, in the heart of the commercial district for the overall project. And, um.
There's a pointer on there if you're interested.
Oh, thank you. If you'd like me to point, please feel free to interrupt, by the way.
No, I'm fine.
Um, yeah. I'm, uh, I'm Armenian and we don't call it interrupting. We call it participating. Um, the, in the, in the center there is what's called a Union Green Park. It forms a natural amphitheater. And then below that is Black Run Park, and that incorporates an extensive existing wetlands, which was restored, um, as part of the project. And then around it is, um, trails and, and public amenity space. Um, a little bit about the parks. Um, part of what made this component of the project possible was a public partnership. So we predeeded, uh, the land underlying the parks to the county EDC. Uh, we did retain the responsibility to design, fund, construct, and build out the parks. Um, but, but without that key partnership, it would, it wouldn't be possible to privately own a public park. It's just, I don't even know, I think we're told we couldn't get insurance for it and things like that, so.
Ma'am, just.
Please.
So why do you have a park? Why, why would they go to the Department of Parks and Recreation?
That's a good question. I, I know it was presented to them. I think they declined. I, 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 I don't want to say this on record. I know we're live streaming, but I think it was presented to them. Because I, I think you met with Carl Dixon, if I'm not mistaken, in the beginning of this. From my recollection, this was like, what, six years ago?
Yeah.
It was still here.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't be able to comment on which, what's the correct corporation to be the owner of it. But the important thing for us is that it would be publicly owned and it, and that ensures it's public in perpetuity and that it's usable as a public park, you know, as opposed to a private green space with a no trespassing sign and, um, different, different accessibility requirements. But the specifics of why it is, I couldn't, I don't know that I could tell you what the, what the reason for that.
Simple answer is, I don't know is fine.
Well, I know where they were involved in the wetlands that are in the southern part of the park. Our Parks and Rec department was involved in that. Um, as far as our EDC, I think we got involved, remember? I think we got involved because we're going to do concerts there. So we had the ability and capacity to take that over. We're going to partner with Harrisburg University to do some concert, serious concerts there. So I think that's why we're the best entity to partner with, with Hawthorne to do this project. From my recollection, is that?
Yeah.
That's the current.
Right.
Status of it, yes.
Yes, and the hierarchy of the green spaces incorporate public, um, public programming. Uh, for example, uh, pr- programming would include concerts, um, you know, pop-up, pop-up events at the farmer's market. Um, we could do outdoor movies. And then there are also, um, like the Black Run Park is a, is a passive recreation opportunity. So things like walking trails. So there's kind of a hierarchy of uses that, that are, um, available within the different green spaces. Uh, this is a current photo. Uh, we actually did restore, do the floodplain restoration. That work is, is completed and, uh, we're in year two of sort of monitoring and maintenance and not keep up it. Um, this is what it looked like when we first did the, um, uh, the, the first phase of the restoration, which was removing a lot of like the invasive vegetation, uh, excavating out legacy spo- uh, legacy sediment that had accumulated for what you would call hundreds of years, ever since, uh, settlement, settlers arrived and began tilling soil and farming and causing erosion that led to, um, you know, deposits of, of sediment within the floodplain. So we excavated out, I think sixteen thousand, a massive amount of soil, sixteen thousand cubic yards. And it actually restores the floodplain, makes it wider, it makes it deeper. Um, and then do other things that involve building these channels out that result.
Can I, can I give you some good tops, Will?
Yeah. Yeah. Too much of a good thing, actually. A lot of it. Uh, the, the floodplain is, is the, this, um, there's a little black arrow there if you can see it. Um, right here, this is, there's a crossing that takes place right here. It's a boardwalk. Uh, it looks like so. This all occurred within the boundaries of the floodplain and then stopped. So the boardwalk doesn't currently connect. It falls under a specific permit, you know, we had to use to operate within the, within the floodplain. So, um, the, the next phase of, of, what we see funding is for construction of, uh, the amenities around the floodplain. And that would be the park components of it. Um, so, uh, this is overall local impact of the project, including job creation, not again, back to whatnot. So the, the overall, um, uh, this is an aerial photo of the, uh, the overall project. Um, this was taken last summer. Um, this is looking from north towards south. So the floodplain, as you can see, is kind of green here where it's, where it's grown in and filled in. And here at the bottom of the photograph is progress on angles down the corner. Um, and, uh, the, I want to show you, uh, within context, uh, where the parks, uh, uh, fall into, uh, all the phases of the project. I'd given you the overall narrative, the various phases that takes place. There's a commercial phase, uh, residential phase, and then the parks and the green space. Um, so, uh, the, the overall site is pretty far along. Uh, the remaining components include some residential apartments, as I mentioned, commercial components and green space. Um, and, uh, there was a, I believe a question. We prepared a slide. You can answer one of the questions you previously provided, and here's some specifics on the park. So, um, the overall, um, uh, the overall cost of Black Run Park, we've completed a lot of it, which includes the floodplain restoration component. Um, and we have installed the boardwalk, but we haven't completed, um, uh, the connection to, to the boardwalk right now and the crossing. Um, there are, the purpose of the, of the application is to, is to create that connection. It's the, the total estimate is just, just, just under a hundred thousand dollars. So we applied for it with seventy-five thousand and we would privately match the rest of it to leverage it. And then the result is basically to connect to the, you know, to leverage a close to two million dollar park space for that, that final missing link to make that connection. Um, if, know, be mindful of the time. Um, I'd be happy to pause here for questions and phone in on any other details or areas of information you'd be interested in hearing about.
How's the, how's the commercial space going?
Good. Good. A lot going on. A lot going on with the project. The commercial space is coming along. We have a couple on, we have a couple of business openings, uh, on schedule for, um, the spring and then later in fall. And there's some new construction to get started with this year for additional space. So, um, yeah.
Stay tuned.
More, more to come, more to do.
The builder, the residential builder is great, by the way.
Yeah, we're really fortunate. Um, we're, I mean, we're fortunate in general in central Pennsylvania. There's so many wonderful tradesmen in building trades and I think we're lucky to have the best residential, one of the best residential partners.
The apartment looks great. The fence, the family looks really good.
Yeah, I, I think so, and, and the market dynamics certainly indicate that. They filled up the apartments as.
Yeah.
As fast as they opened them.
So there's another phase, right?
Yeah, there's, there's, um, there's two, uh, lots that have apartments on them. One of them was completed. And the, the second one, we're in pre-construction right now. Just pulled permits on it.
Okay.
Just last, uh, just in the last permits I got last year. And, um, your, your contractors mobilizing to get started on those. So hopefully 12 months from now, the, uh, all the apartments will be done.
Okay.
And then we'll be building out additional commercial space probably for the foreseeable future, probably a couple of buildings a year for the next few years.
I went into one of the, uh, uh, rest, little sandwich shop, sorry, I forget the name of it.
I know one, yeah.
But I didn't want to get back, uh, to the office and I got a text from, or an email from them. Said, "Thanks for your banking." I said, "I didn't, I paid in cash." Yeah.
It was the 21st century.
Section's on your.
Good thing it wasn't worth even a lot of information, Adam.
Did you, did you see the Eiffel Tower steps when you were there?
Yeah.
We, if you've been there in the last, um, month and a half, two months.
I wasn't. It's been a while since I've been there.
And we, we just did the, uh, we just installed those steps. You gotta go check that out. It's really inspiring.
Okay.
That's a segment of the actual Eiffel Tower. So we're doing everything we can, everything we can to do it the right way. And, um, so, and you get to have an opportunity to, you know, see what we're doing and ask any questions you want. And, and if, um, and if it gets no word, we'd be really appreciative and we'd be excited to make that, make that connection now.
Did, did Brett ever open up?
Oh, yeah, they opened up. They, they were, they spent more time building it than they did operating it. It's a sore subject in case you can't tell.
I can imagine. Because they, it's like the, the, I guess the timing was bad, whatever, but they built it, opened up, closed, and.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, my opinion is offline. You're not positive.
Permany Brothers will be opening in that, in that building in the next few months, so.
Permany's in, they're in the process of fitting out the store now. They have modified it to be a full-service restaurant. So I think, uh, I think the site's, it's gonna, in the, in the long run, I think we're, it's gonna be, you know, look, looking back five, 10 years from now, I think we're gonna be better off with, with, um, having Permany there. It's gonna be great.
Everyone's so excited.
Yeah.
My son said, "We don't have to go to Hershey, man." We don't have to pour it here.
And I'm, I'm a Penn Stateer. I like beer. There's not a lot of places to get beer near where I work, so.
Not for hours, of course.
Not for hours, yeah.
Those things. Tell I'm responsible for.
You wear the E. J. R. thing?
Yeah.
I, I'm still riding.
Yeah, you're, yeah.
I'm still riding. I have a dirty name, so the dirty name in the state thing is, you know.
We hope you beat Ohio State.
Yes.
As a Penn State fan, right?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that for you. Be more than happy to.
Thank you. Thanks for staying up late. Allow us to be here. Power.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to y'all. Good luck to the elephants.
Yeah.
Shit.
What does the timer say?
Oh, you had, uh, the, uh, two minutes left or whatever it is.
You're actually leaving before your presentation.
That's well done. It was fun.
It's wondering what Earth has spent. Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
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 Hi.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And it's just a better, you know, all, all there.
Good evening. So you guys have approximately like 15 minutes for your presentation. I'll set a timer for 12. Right, so if that goes off, we know we need to wrap some things up. So that, uh, the folks that follow you guys have their share of this as well. So, um, we are live streaming. Lights over here to your right. Uh, please speak clearly so the folks can hear you. Identify yourselves, uh, who you represent and what you're requesting. So whenever you're ready, who is yours?
I'm Heidi Meis. I am the grant writer for the Williamstown EMS grant.
I'm out of the company of, uh, Williamstown EMS, um, Assistant Chief.
So we had, um, applied for the gaming grant. Um, you guys had sent us a list of, uh, five questions you still, uh, needed answered. And so what I have done is we did put up a PowerPoint presentation and, um, I tried to incorporate those questions so we can touch base on all the things that you were looking to have answered. Um, the first slide there, that is an example, uh, of the truck we're looking to purchase. Um, you go to the next slide? You have to push down.
On that, we will.
The down is the first.
Just the slides.
Move it down.
That depends on which way you're holding it.
All right. Yeah. Okay, we are requesting two hundred and eight, six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, thirty-four cents to purchase the new 2024 F54x4 diesel truck. And the reason that, um, we need that truck is there, we're listed, um, which were also listed in the grant. Um, since I have down and red at the bottom, um, one of the reasons is, you know, it's, it's older. Uh, it's beginning to, uh, spending a lot of money on it. And since the writing of the grant, uh, they had to spend another five thousand dollars. Uh, so, um, that's one of the reasons that we're applying. So that's one of the reasons that we're applying for a new truck. Why a 4x4 may have been a question. And the reason is because of the weather. Emergencies, don't care if it's snow, sleet, ice, rain, you know, or it's nice weather. We live in a very rural area, we're from northern Dolphin County. All the hospitals that we would transport to, we have to go over a mountain. So also, we.
Did you current one, 4x4 is one?
Yes.
They're different terrain, the mountains, long driveways, wooded and hard-to-reach areas that we have to respond to sometimes. That factored into getting a 4x4. And there is another 4x4 EMS in the service area. But if it was a mutual aid situation and they need a second one, it's helpful that we would have that. I've listed the total population that we service. And we have collaborations with all the boroughs and townships and the fire companies in those areas. And you can see that there, that's broken out into the different boroughs and townships. It is crucial for us to get this in vehicle for faster response times, reliability, and of course, that we can provide quality care. And provided our mission statement, that we provide 24-hour quality care to residents and visitors of the area. Not only do we service aid capacity, but we do a lot of community involvement, work with the local schools and help volunteer for football games, different things like that. We do trainings and education. The outcomes that we're looking after being able to purchase a new vehicle is, of course, to respond timely, increase reliability, high-quality care, to increase our mutual aid. And another thing I put in right there that was not in the grant, the rapid response vehicle that we also have will soon be in the, also the same situation, will need to be replaced because it's getting older. And we're starting to put some money into that one as well.
Is that 20 years old too?
Uh, no, it's, it's 2015.
Okay. Oh, oh, okay. The, I, I put our financials in there, so you can take a look at that. I, oops, did I go too far? To go to, so that we, as you can see, we are going to purchase the vehicle regardless of the gaming grant. But it would be able, it would allow us to free up that money for different things that we have in ways of education, equipment that we need. And also, they, like I said, eventually down the road, the rapid response vehicle. We did not apply for the Pema grant. The person who was doing grants, that thing did, did not apply for that last year, but we do plan on doing that here coming in the spring. Also as part of the ambulance funds that we need. We didn't, we're, you want to talk about when you're looking to?
Yeah, we're looking to order the new ambulance, come maybe May or June. They're backward right now, a lot of the ambulances. So we're trying to get it ordered sooner than later.
And then you'll get it in 2028?
Yeah, possibly.
So we had another ambulance company in here and they were talking about a bariatric ambulance. Will this ambulance take large people?
Our, our current leaders that we, that we have, we also have a load system in there, which we don't have to lift anymore. It just goes right in and it lifts up itself. They can lift up to 750 pounds. And they have wings that come down that could hold a wider person. So if they, we could use it as a bariatric truck, yes, we have in the past.
You're a lot closer than Adams County.
Or was it?
Yeah, they had to do backup in Adams County for when it was two hours and 20 minutes later till they got to where they need to be. It was nice of them to come, but, you know, yeah.
Right.
Any other questions?
No.
I mean, just with the, like she was saying with the education and stuff, we're trying to also use some money towards education of getting people to become EMTs. There's not many of us out there anymore. Our numbers are dwindling. So we're trying to get it, the education part also, the funds.
So what's the thought? I mean, why is it dwindling? Why, why is it crazy?
Oh, not enough day. Crazy hour is not enough day.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it's, I work two jobs in the EMS and still struggle. But this ambulance would help our, help our Dolphin County out a lot.
No, the mutual aid is, is a big deal.
Yeah. So where do you take the patients from Swinburne Dolphin County? Where do you normally take them? Our main hospital that we take them to is Harrisburg. But we can go as far as Geisinger, Danville, EVAN Hospital, all the Westshore facilities. And we also use Pottsville. Which is closest, is possible closest? Technically, it's about 40 minutes and Harrisburg is 45. But Pottsville doesn't, doesn't do as much as like what Harrisburg does with their heart care and stuff. Pottsville is just like a small hospital. We truly transport mostly down here.
Since you're still here, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you questions. I think it indicates in your application, I think you have the funds available to purchase it. So even if you're partially funded, you'll be able to move forward with this project, does that make sense to me? Because I think you were looking to move forward next month. I think I thought I saw in your response or something there, like, this won't be known until roughly April, mid-April? So just to give you expectations on the timeline.
We had put in the application in March, we were hoping to. But the more they talked about it or whatever, it looked like it was gonna be more of a major timeframe until they. It would, it would have an answer, yeah.
And do you expect this price to go up between now and 2028?
Uh, 2028?
Like, if you order it now, will the price be frozen or will it?
This price here, he said may, may fluctuate a little bit. Not, not like $100,000, $50,000, maybe between $5,000 and $10,000.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey. Go up here.
So 1972 Harrisburg High Principal Vic Jones, you know who that is? Fordham Films, likes to do a film on that. Okay.
My preservation's more about buildings.
Hi.
We are live streaming and our mic is down here to your right.
Both the mics to the right?
Yeah, it's right in front of you there.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we have roughly 15 minutes for your presentation this evening, right? If you wouldn't mind identifying yourselves, who you're with, what you're requesting, so that folks that are live streaming too understand what we're revealing and talking about in the grand scheme of things. And it's also nice to have a good record, right? So I'll set a timer for 12 minutes. So if this goes off, we know we need to wrap things up because you have some folks coming in behind you.
Okay.
That said, whenever you're ready.
Okay, all right, let me get started.
It's not me.
That's me. I'll just ignore it if you can. All right, thank you. I'm Daniel Fordham. Daniel Fordham, I'm the owner and chief executive officer of Fordham Films LLC. I do have a team, Ben Douglas of Human Resources for our Fordham Films Department. He's also an employee of WITM. Then Heather Wright, our plans, operations director, and she is also a military combat veteran. And this is Detective William Fong of the Baltimore Police Department, who is our main character in the film that I'm doing and what I'm going to be talking to you about today. First of all, let me thank you for your time and consideration and the opportunity with this grant. And before I get started, I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm the chief executive officer again of Fordham Films LLC. I'm an ordained minister. I served as a staff music writer for Telepictures and Warner Brothers, as well as assistant location manager for the HBO film, The Paterno Moon, starring Al Pacino. I was an actor for theater Harrisburg for 20 years under the direction of Tom Hostetter, an actor for open stage in Harrisburg for 15 years under director Don Alsterville. I was a cameraman for Harrisburg City's WHBG TV, Channel 20, under the direction of Roman Baty for Mayor Eric Pattonfees. I have the CEO of the nonprofit organization, the Commonwealth Film Arts Training and Development Center. And finally, director of Fordham Films and film acting class and film school. Please forgive me, I'm winding down. Thank you. Be informed that in July of 2024, we did complete our pre-application interview and have reviewed the May 2024 Local Share Municipal Grant Advocate Program Guidelines and the Pen. And now let me tell you about Fordham Films and the project that has brought us here today. Fordham Films LLC is a sole proprietorship entity and an award-winning community film company that has been doing business in Harrisburg since 2011. We take ordinary local citizens and teach them the art of acting and filmmaking. And then we present, we present them in theater released movies and streaming platforms. We involve and have involved all ages, especially senior citizens and children, all ethnicities and belief systems. We cater to those who can't get to open stage and can't get to theater Harrisburg, those who have never acted before but would love to be in a movie. Those of our urban citizens who do not have access or feel shut out of the world of theater arts. And we turn them into actors that will shock and amaze you with their amazing performances. A lot of our actors have gone on to do great things. Tony Cummins of Harrisburg, who got a role in Denzel Washington's movie, Fences. Ricky Zaire, who got a role in The House of Cards. A young lady named Quay Felton, who tried out for the, my first movie and currently has a role in Tyler Perry's new movie, Six Triple Eight, a story about an African-American woman in the military. I have many touching and rewarding stories, which include the saving of an individual's life who just got with our program, who was on the verge of doing something serious to himself and we were able to encourage him. And now he's doing great in the community. And I feel more proud about that than anybody. We are the premier community film company in this area and there is none like us. We are the only ones doing what we do. We have done very well for our community. I am proud of what we do and give all credit to my heavenly Father. He has me on a mission and though it is tough and seemingly impossible at times, there are always beautiful moments that make the journey worthwhile and so wonderful. Fordham Films LLC has worked with hundreds of Dolphin County residents and affected thousands. And I can tell you from many wonderful responses, we are uplifting our community and changing lives. For our first film, Easy Hustle, we received an outstanding proclamation from the mayor of Harrisburg, declaring April 28th of 2012, Fordham Films LLC Day. Our first movie was an amazing success. We had almost 200 people come to our casting call. But what impressed me most of all was the sold-out premieres. And even more so, the magnitude of the interest of Dolphin County residents in filmmaking. Harrisburg was hungry to be in and a part of a movie. We were affecting our community in a positive way and you could see it and you could feel it. I went on to do my second film, Reunion, which was even larger. And then last year, the 21st Century Band movie, both of which premiered at the Midtown Cinema, the Regal Theater and the Colonial Park Mall with standing room-only performances. I also created a successful web series called Miles Handy, about a duo of paranormal investigators in search of God, which leads me to the current project of which we are seeking funding for, The Vic Jones Story. This project is huge because it's the story of a Harrisburg High School principal named Victor Jones and the effect he had on the students and the city of Harrisburg while heading up the beginning of Harrisburg High School in 1972. This project will be filmed in Harrisburg using local actors from Dolphin County. We are asking for $70,000 and we are seeking these grant funds to acquire only the equipment needed to produce this epic film and the Netflix compliant film. With this grant, the quality of our finished product will get us hundreds and thousands of interest and also hundreds of community film actors' professional exposure to the mainstream film industry, as well as exposure on television. This grant will not only help with this project, but will also add value to every Fordham Films project going forward. With this grant, Fordham Films will be able to get the professional equipment needed to create this epic film about a time in Harrisburg where our local education system was changed forever. Using these grant funds, we will be able to create a quality production that will match any movie coming out of Hollywood. It will put Harrisburg on the filmmaking list of cities that produce great films and will help facilitate international recognition and exposure for this film by submitting it to film festivals, Netflix and other streaming platforms, as well as movie theaters. The Vic Jones Story, supported by this grant, will also give Dolphin County residents inspiration by telling the story of a local hero, while giving our community actors an opportunity to, opportunity to gain experience and have a professional career if they choose in the movie industry. Casting and filming for the Vic Jones movie has already begun. The film consists of 122 scenes. We are using our outdated equipment right now to film the minor scenes now, which is in accordance with Netflix guidelines. And reserving our major scenes for the month of April with our new equipment. Our goal is to wrap up filming by July of 2025 and premiere the movie in October 2025. And before I close for questions, I want you to know that we at Fordham Films want to always show our community a better and brighter way of life. Instead of allowing our city to be consumed with reports of rising crime, especially from the youth, crime in Harrisburg is unacceptable. But from 2012 to 2024, according to the Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Reporting System, crime in Dolphin County was down by 4,000 incidents. And I would like to think we had something to do with that, since we do work with the youth and the urban community. Having said that, let me say this also. The Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention reported, and I quote, "By allowing youth to use their creative talents, arts and performances, you help youth develop a sense of identity, independence, discipline and self-worth. It also helps prevent or reduce crime and violence among young artists and performers involved." According to research, students who participate in band, orchestra, chorus or drama are significantly less likely than those that, than, than non-participants. chorus, or drama are significantly less likely than those that, than nonparticipants to drop out of school, be arrested, use drugs, or engage in binge drinking. Just to say that Fordham Films is needed in the community. And I quote, this in which I came up with, "An investment in the arts is an investment into the health of the city." The seventy thousand we are requesting from Dolphin County Local Share will be eighty-eight percent of the budget needed to produce the film. Theater rentals will be five thousand, which we will cover with pre-ticket sales. Food for the cast will be eighteen hundred, cast and staff, which we will cover. We will also cover gas for vehicles, which is twelve hundred. Location fees, which is eight hundred. Clothes, four hundred and fifty, and permits, three hundred. The location fees will be coming out of our GoFund page. At this point, we have raised one thousand and ninety-five dollars in GoFund money. The cost of the total project is eighty thousand dollars. The gaming grant fund is critical to the quality of our film and the moving forward of our community and film actors. The theme for the comprehensive plan of Dolphin County Municipal is Growing Together. The evidence of how the Vic Jones movie conforms to the comprehensive plan falls into the category of community development. We also conform the lower pacts and townships comprehensive plan as well by identifying ways to improve recreational opportunities. We are actually seeking ways to improve our community's recreational opportunities by delivering recreational arts and including them in the process, which is the community and our own constituents. We have included in our application many levels of support, from the professional to the most common of people. Our Dolphin County community deserves the right to have access to the worldwide professional acting and filmmaking environment that exists, and we want to make that happen for them, don't you? And now, in the interest of time, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have, and please forgive me rushing.
Hi, I'm Betsy.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, for this money, are you going to buy this equipment or rent it?
Yes, ma'am, we're going to buy it.
Okay. And who will the owner be?
That will be Fordham Films.
Fordham Films.
I'm listening, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
How have you funded your previous?
How have you funded previously? Well, actually, I started, my wife took out a loan for thirty-five hundred dollars, and I bought my first camera. And so it has really been a blessing from the Father that we have even made it this far. I like to say we caught a whale with a toothpick and some dental floss. It's been tough. We, and I've never, I hated begging, I never begged for money, but we have people that have poured into us. Friends have loaned us money, and we have paid them back by way of when we got ourselves from the movie. Because all of our movie premieres were sold out. Every time we had a movie premiere, uh, Ben, this is Ben, I'm sorry, um, every time we had a film, our movies sold out in theaters. We were able to take care of our loans that we incurred. This is, you won't be able to see this, it's kind of dark, but this is the Regal Theater in their fullest room, and we filled it to capacity. There was standing room only, and even I had to stand up. We do great work in the community. Our films are outstanding. But the problem is, in order to get where we want to go, which is in a professional realm, we need professional equipment. And so that is why, when I was approached with the idea of being able to get a grant, which we have even didn't even put in our minds, we were just roughing it the whole time, but we have served our community. Ben, could you get me the other one with the children? Yeah. This is just part of the people that come to our casting. We have over two hundred people show up for our casting hall, and they're of all ethnicities, you know, of all tongues and creed, you would be amazed. And the joy that I get out of it is the fact that we have uplifted and encouraged so many people to be great and to pursue their dreams. There are many avenues to get to the mainstream movie industry, and we, as I was saying, are the only ones doing this in the community. And we do it because we love it. My dad was a Negro League baseball player. I'm probably out of time. Am I?
No, keep, I like.
My dad was a Negro League baseball player, and I always wanted to do a movie about his life because he made it the third in the cut with the Brooklyn Dodgers. But they wouldn't accept him because of the color of his skin. And he wrote a book called I Gave Him My Best Shot. And I don't know if you know the older black man that was down at the Broad Street Market selling books? That's my dad. And I always wanted to make it for him. And it, excuse me, he passed away before I could make a movie about his life. But this is the way this all started. And then I found out that there were so many people that just wanted to be involved in filmmaking and wanted to, uh, I'm sorry, I get choked up. And they wanted to be in filmmaking, wanted to just be a part of something great. And we gave them that. And that touched my heart and rewarded me as well. And so Fordham Films LLC was born, and we're not stopping. I mean, we're not stopping for anyone. This is all I do, twenty-four hours. Ben will tell you. This is our operations manager, Human Resources, and I'm sorry, and this is Heather Caesar, our planning officer.
Okay.
And so this is all we do. I know it's all I do, twenty-four hours.
Do you have any questions, Lita?
I do not, thank you.
So, yeah, so if we do invest in this, and it's truly an investment, right?
Yes.
In the scheme of things, what is, I mean, this is one project, assuming somewhere in those creative juices, you have that next thought coming?
Already on. Yeah, my aunt Judith Hill was the first black city councilwoman of Harrisburg, Judith C. Hill. They now have named the street for her. She's my mom's sister, my aunt. She was going to be actually in the, she was going to actually be the movie we're doing now, but I had to work out some things with the family, and so that's probably going to end up being the next film. I am going to probably do many films on local heroes in Harrisburg and make it worldwide. Because there are people that have done so many great things that go unrecognized. There are unsung heroes in our city, and I want to recognize them.
George.
There you go, George.
You're an unsung hero, man.
Oh, okay. Tell me your story. Yeah, I'd be glad to do something.
He helped out a lot of people.
Right.
Well, this, this entity.
That Six Triple Eight story, that was a great movie.
That's a great movie.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll watch that if I get a chance on Netflix. It's an excellent movie.
Yeah.
I watched it on my snow day. That's fantastic. So no other questions? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate your time.
So how did you do? How did you get recruited?
How did I get recruited? I went to high school with his wife.
Okay.
And I went to the academy, and we went to school together. And he was like, hey, I forgot, I think I, it was martial arts, because I trained martial arts as well, too. And when the instructors came, hey, you want to be in the movie? I was like, movie? I was like, what? And I was like, all right, I said, better than, you know, chasing my bad guys and doing crazy stuff. So let me just try. I like it. I'm like, I never thought I'd actually be doing that. I'm like, am I doing this right? And then marriage is.
Well, as a policeman, don't you have to act a lot? Like, act like you're cool with what's going on?
Just, it's all about dealing with people. I love dealing with people.
Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you.
Yes, luck, Kate.
I appreciate you. Thank you. See you, doc.
Bye.
Take care.
Thank you.
This, uh, does it clicker?
Yeah.
Kareem's Mission.
That was interesting.
For what?
Yeah.
All these tears to me.
Oh.
All the tears. It's like you.
Coming down, George's time.
I love that.
He's commenting Kareem's Mission, take all the rest. So we've run out of time.
Let's see if we get George to come.
We're going to leave soon.
You want us to wait for you? Just there.
I can possibly eat more than stuff.
This is a little late to tell you we have coffee ready to brew.
Thanks.
I'll stop by on my way to work tomorrow morning.
We had a new coffee shop and bakery open up in Halifax recently last week. It is adorable. It's called Sunlight Bakery, which we had at the high school. It is fabulous. The most delicious doughnut I have ever eaten in my life. I had a Boston cream filled. I swear to God, I know not a lot of people like that. That's my favorite. But it was like a weight. I was lifting weights. It was so filled. It was amazing. My coffee was fabulous. So it was a nice little.
So what time do they open?
On Monday through Friday, they open at six.
Oh, wow.
Six to three, and then Saturday, seven to four. So it's nice during the week because Sam starts work at seven. So if he is there at six, he can get something there.
Yeah.
It's the only place that we have that is open that early. It is fabulous.
That's cool.
Yeah.
George.
I have a quite smooth plan. Thank you. Hi.
Hello.
Anywhere here? Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
No worse for the wear. So you have approximately fifteen minutes for your presentation. We are live streaming, and the mic is to the left, you're right.
Okay.
So please speak up so that's captured, as well as state who you are, who you represent, and what your request is, so that the folks that are streaming understand what's going on as well, for the public record. We may have some questions here and there. We may interrupt, not meant to be rude. It's just to try to keep things moving along. I believe you received a few questions in advance, so if you wouldn't mind weaving some of that into your presentation tonight, that would be appreciated. That said, I will start the timer for twelve minutes. That goes off, we need to wrap things up. We have someone following you. So whenever you're ready.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Perfect, thank you.
So down advances the slot.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. First of all, hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time to talk to you about, uh, project is close to my heart, Kareem's Mission. It's an autism support organization and the Autism Center that we are working on. I started this project after my son was diagnosed with autism, and just learning and trying to navigate and trying to get through, you know, finding support in the area, talking to parents and seeing how hard it is to just basically find the resource, put the name on the waiting list, and at the same time, take care of your son, try to get to work, and just basically do everything in your daily life. There is not enough time to go over my journey and why I established Kareem's Mission, but autism spectrum disorder is a developmental disorder affecting communication, behavior, and social interaction. And many families in our community struggle to find the help that they need, and I'm an example of that. So Kareem's Mission was created to address the gap. We are not here to reinvent the wheel. There are several organizations that are working in different areas. They're not talking to each other. So we're basically trying to fill in the gap and to offer supportive, inclusive, and empowering environment for individuals with autism and their families. The Autism Center, and I'm happy to report that Central Penn College gave us a space, that's four thousand square foot, to use, yes, in Milana Hall. They gave us a six-month grant from the college, so we don't have to pay any rent until June first. And we signed in January first. So the Autism Spectrum Center is coming to life, and the main goal for having that center is to have a safe space for the kids and a judgment-free zone. I realized when Kareem got diagnosed, we go, just for example, a simple thing you do, to go to the store or you go out to eat, people look at you differently. They think the child is not behaving well. It depends on the level of the spectrum your child is. The severe, they will have more pronounced signs, and you can tell it from screaming to hitting, punching, or just basically falling in the middle of. So behavior is that, that's my reminder to be here, so. So those behaviors. I have like every fifteen-minute reminder. So behavior that, maybe the community will look at it and deem it like not appropriate. So we are trying to provide a space where they can be themselves and thrive. And at the same time, the parent support. I started that at home before the center and listening to the parent and seeing the need of just being with people that understand why your kid, plus the things that they do, and just not to feel guilty about loving your child and still feeling stressed. The waitlist is six to twelve months. When my son was diagnosed, now it can go up to eighteen months. We have four children, every thirty-sixth child in Central Pennsylvania is diagnosed with autism, and we only have two centers that are providing behavioral therapy. We don't have anything like the proposal that Kareem's Mission is bringing to the community. So the main goal is to improve quality of life. When you basically raise awareness and teach the parent how they can help their kids to communicate, to basically learn how to speak. Most of the kids are nonverbal. You are setting them for success, and you also are creating a life for them to be successful in their education or in their careers, such becoming a, you know, productive member in our community, providing quality of life, promoting independence, once they learn the skills. And Kareem is an example for that. He was nonverbal, moderate to severe, but the focus from the Mission Autism Center, MAC, and our work with him at home and having a village to help me raise him. So he is a blessing.
How old was Kareem?
He is five and a half.
How old was he when he got the diagnosis?
Two years. And the only reason, I mean, the health failed, so I was able to see the signs in an early age and reach out to the early intervention, which they're really amazing. And the only reason he got to be accepted at Mission Autism MAC, which we have one here in Harrisburg and Mechanicsburg, because I knew, I know people, and I had enough money. I was financially stable. And I can tell you, I have one of, uh, HCC Staffing was my company, and it's, it was financially lucrative. Having Kareem and focusing on his well-being and trying to help and trying to navigate, calling and putting him in waitlist, doctor appointment, and everything in between, it took a toll, and I couldn't focus on my work. So it's, it affected my business. And even with my savings and everything I have, I'm struggling. So think of somebody who worked at their job. I was able to work from home for a long time with him, someone who is, have to be at work. So you call off, the daycare will not accept a child with special needs unless they have someone with them. So you wait six to twelve months to get your child into a center. What are you going to do in between? So there is programs, there are programs that will train the parent and pay them a small amount, like fourteen dollar an hour, like Abby Care, which we're partnering with, and allow them to work with their children, and also take away of being on Medicare or just depending on the government. It would create a culture of inclusion and would teach skills, not just to the parent but to the kids. And also, we are aiming to, we already started, but we have collaboration in colleges such as HAC, Central Penn College. I'm on the board of first D with HAC, and we have the center at Central Penn. I speak at Davidson College. Several colleges are on board in creating programs that will help Kareem's Mission train not just educators but employers. We talked to giants, several local organizations here, and how they can assess. We had several elder, you could say We had several elder, we could say twenty, twenty years old on the spectrum. They applied for a job. They couldn't succeed because they were placed in the wrong place. Simple as not putting a child who does not like talking to people in a cashier.
Sure.
Just putting them in the back. So those simple things could improve the quality of life for our individuals and the family. We have a holistic approach in the center. We have therapists that are helping us. We are working on the awareness part. We started Kareem's K-Mission TV, which is a channel that provides videos with therapy. So even if the parents are not able to get therapy in the center, they can watch our therapist for three minutes, teaching them how you can train your child to use the bathroom or how you can train them not to hurt themselves or, like the simple skills. And we also have a second part where the children are represented. So the nursery rhymes, the songs are created by therapists with music that is not too loud for them in a sensory in mind. That's Kareem's. You can interrupt me anytime. I'm passionate about this and I can talk for a year. And so far, we hosted three community events. Kareem's Mission is sponsored by Member First. And the list is long of the people that are standing behind us and I'm really grateful for that. But we participated in nine community table days, back to schools in different counties. And we have five counties are behind us. We have support from elected officials from both parties. We have policies that we address with them. I personally go and speak. I work with colleges, with organizations, hospitals, UPMC. They developed part of our plan. They provided sensory equipments and sensory bags in their emergency room. Then they just did a model of our center in their state college with Dr. Lee. And they provided a small room. We suggested that they have a room in every place that is dedicated for kids with autism. So when they go to college, they are able to, you know, put their headphones and not get looked at differently. That's in a nutshell, just me talking without going with the PowerPoint. But the awareness part, the Kareem's Mission, oh, you're fine. K-Mission TV is part of the awareness, providing educational resources. We have an hour free for every parent online. They can go on kareemismission.org and just request a therapist to talk to them. We have three therapists that are providing free and we're hoping to have more. Accessibility, we are aiming to have everything bridging the gaps. We connected with Cumberland, Intellectual Developmental, Dolphin County, the ARC, with Abby Care, with Assert, Penn State, Dickinson Messiah College, HAC, and Central Penn so far. And I'm gonna keep going. Advocacy is reaching out to our elected officials. And if you look at our letters, you will see from, you know, here, local officials to, I met with Congressman Stavberry in DC, with Senator Furman. Here we have Greg Rothman, we have Hattigan, we have several people, our local officials who are supporting, send us a letter. And we are going to continue talking to the parent and just finding what issues we have and work with that. The future direction of Kareem's Mission, the community center, it's going to provide sensory rooms, going to provide music, art, and look at the strengths of every individual child that went to our center and work on strengthening their strengths instead of focusing on those shortcomings. For the parent, we started a cafe, parent cafe, and store. The store, I work with several companies. We have like cups. We have the talking flash card that will teach them and it's also would help your parents. I'm gonna stop here. There is a lot, honestly. I can't. Apologize if I'm too fast.
So you were fine. I don't have your presentation for me. What is your timeline with this use of this hundred and fifty thousand?
Actually, we started.
Okay.
The six months is paid by Central Penn, so we will utilize the amount for the lease for the center, equipment. And I reach out to everyone that I know so they can have the equipment, with resources. We're trying to make it free of charge for all the parents. The timeline, if we can get as soon as possible, I'm gonna keep going. And any help is gonna help us just reach more, more kids and families. This is a talking flash card that we developed and it has everything. I mean, I can't say everything, but for, for kids until age like ten, I think. So it's like the daily life, activity of daily living and it's.
Hey parents, my name is Karim.
And it would just basically, you insert this.
Sea horse.
And some do have sounds, like you teach them what animals sound like, jackets. And we're gonna keep going.
So the new center that's gonna open at Central Penn College, is that going to be the only location? Are you still looking to open a center in Upper Paxton Township?
We have Camp Curtain. We partner with the YMCA. So we have Camp Curtain and East Shore Y. They're also wanted us to work at the West Shore Y. She live in New York, so we have.
So how does that partnership work with provide services at their location?
Yes. So they have at Camp Curtain, we have, they have the basement area and they're currently working with the food bank, so they're adding us to that. The hours still not like, we really wanted to keep it open like every day. But, you know, we're still, like I said, in the process.
So for the budget or, you know, project presented in the application, would some of this equipment or therapy services be provided in Dolphin County, not just in Cumberland?
All of it. Central Penn College and HAC are working with us on the center there. So they provided us, the center is beautiful. I'll really wish you all to come and visit. The grand opening is April nineteenth, but we have, they provide us with furniture and the basic needs that we have. So the Camp Curtain and the West Shore, we use with the center also. HAC is giving us a place at Harrisburg.
Okay.
Canvas as well. They are going to provide some equipment also.
Has the, with the development of opening the center at Central Penn College, has the renovation budget changed at all or it's still five hundred thousand dollars?
Well, for Central Penn, I don't think we're gonna need all of that for Central Penn College because the place is, is beautiful. Just need, like, you know, to keep it safe and secure.
Safe areas.
Yeah, safe areas. They are cleaning. The only thing that they're gonna do now is clean. So we're gonna do everything else.
You identified that there are several donations or donors to the project. Are there amounts associated with those?
Yes. I personally, with money from my savings, it is east staffing and the network, close to a hundred, I can give you a hundred seventy-six. We paid for services like establish, get everything, the animation, the people who are working. And Member First just granted, gave us a five thousand, but they are considering us for the ten thousand. UPMC gave us a thousand and their foundation waiting for us to get the center. And they are going to donate as well. Hershey. Hershey Vista.
Alvesta School.
Alvesta School is, they donated and they're also partnering with us. And we also partner with MAC, Mission Autism, which joined with Helping Hands here. They have three centers, Mechanicsburg and, let me see. And we did an in-kind donation. We did a fundraising. We are, we have all this material there and it's going to be sold also for profit that will go back into the center. We have T-shirts. We have a lot of merchandise. We have a lot of people that are promising. We applied for several grants and we need to hear from some. But until then, we're keeping it going. Family, friends, people donate. And I'm using my own savings. I know this is important. I already invested a lot and I will continue to do it. But I will appreciate if you can help me get there faster.
Any other questions? Thank you much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Do you mind if I leave somebody? This is not like a gift or anything. Just so you just see.
That's fine.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you for everything you do. You can leave this so they can see it.
We can put it away.
No?
No, we can put it away.
Okay, all right. All right. Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Just leave it here.
Thank you.
Thank you. George, you wanna bring in the next applicant?
Please hear. Kristen, do you wanna put your camera on?
So you have our final slot this evening. Just because of that doesn't mean that you can run over your thirty minutes. So I have a set of timer for twenty-five minutes. If that goes off, we team it up. Make sure you identify yourself, who you're affiliated with, and what your request is.
Yes, sir. Excuse me.
Take a look.
Take a look. Oh, actually. I'm George Connor, Executive Director of the Dolphin County Community and Economic Development Department. This is Kristen Ritchie with Comcast. Kristen, if you wanna say who you are and what you do at Comcast. Is she frozen?
Yeah.
So back in 2020 when COVID hit, our commissioners had experienced some situations with students that had, did not have any Wi-Fi at their homes when all the kids and children were working or whether were working from home with school. And essentially, they were driving down over the mountain, going to Starbucks, Panera Bread, wherever they could get Wi-Fi to do their classwork. That being said, at the time, our commissioners wanted to assist our northern Dolphin County residents who didn't have any internet.
She typed you something.
Oh, she did?
George, is your, are you on the HRC?
I am. I'll keep going. Technology is good till it's not. So yeah, so what happened was we, we took a look at this and essentially, we wanted to try to assist with providing internet service to our northern Dolphin County residents. That being said, we did an RFP to, what's going on? We did an RFP to look for broadband companies to come and construct Wi-Fi for the northern Dolphin County residents. That being said, we had, I think about maybe three different proposals that were submitted to the county. We selected Comcast and we did a public-private partnership with them. The loan is about four point one five seven million dollars to construct broadband expansion services up over the mountain. We have about a two point five million dollar loan. The request is for three hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. That's our debt service and the second payment on the AM schedule. It's a ten-year AM schedule, a three point six nine percent interest rate.
And it's three twenty-five or three twenty-eight?
Three twenty-eight.
Okay.
And two hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. And this is the second request. You guys granted us a hundred seventy thousand last year, which was the first payment on the AM schedule for the project that was in 2022. Any questions?
Is it working nicely?
It is. They started construction and that's what Kristen was gonna talk about a little bit, but something's going on with this Wi-Fi. I don't know. I don't know if the camera's still working either. Yeah, she was gonna, if you guys had any questions for her, construction been going well. I know that they did have some issues with prevailing wage. I think the lineman, it's something with the telecom lineman. The state doesn't have the regulations on a prevailing wage rate for that particular type of job. So they had to use a different category and it's a little bit more.
Why is it prevailing wage, George?
Because there's some state dollars in it.
Okay.
So, but they have started construction and customers are receiving services, so.
Did the state dollars or grant dollars?
Yes. Yeah, they're applying for another grant called a BE. It's, what's the acronym? Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. That's a state grant for the broadband services. And they'll be applying for that to expand to more residents up over the mountain.
So how far is it going?
Over Peters Mountain, as far as east or west.
Of north, how far north?
All Dolphin County, north of Peters Mountain, east and west. So basically, we have Lykanes Township, Mifflin Township, Upper Paxton, Reek Township, Wade, Jefferson, Halifax, Washington Township, Jackson Township. And the school districts are Halifax, Upper Dolphin, and Millsburg. And some local businesses as well will benefit from the services that the commissioners want to provide for the northern end. Haven't ever had any Wi-Fi in their lives up there because just, you know, the public entities just won't, won't provide services over the mountain. To the subsidies. So we provided that subsidy to assist with the construction services. I was getting a move up there, so I found out.
That is a deal.
Now that it has Wi-Fi, you're not going.
Not going now.
I have no questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Are they, are they just building out, you know, what they would typically build out in a community where they're, where they're just corporately investing? So they'll provide video services as well?
Yeah, full, full services. Everything that we get down here, you know. I think you live in Halifax, but you've had Comcast, right?
She had to work through franchise agreements in those communities and I think normally have to move.
Does that mean these kids aren't gonna have a snow day?
No snow day. Snow day, no snow, no sledding on snow days and snowmobile flights and stuff. You gotta get to work, right?
Everybody.
You have access. The access, yeah. So I can go into the other grant?
Grant management.
Yes, you may.
Yeah, so the second request is for two hundred, oh, I'm sorry. George Connor with the Dolphin County Community Economic Development Office, Executive Director. This request is for a grants management system for two hundred thousand dollars. And as we, when I first started back in 2002, we had like two brands. We had the tourism brand and we had a first-time home buyers' brand. We had the IDA and EDC. That was it. So we can do municipal bond financing. We didn't have a loan program and that was it. And we had, when I first started, like I told you guys before, we became a PJ and then we started receiving the CBG dollars. then we started receiving the CDVG dollars. So we had CDVG in home, tourism and first-time homebuyer's program. That's it. Now we have about nineteen different programs in this office. Um, and essentially.
What sort of budget is that?
Oh, that's over fifty million. So essentially we have the gaming grant program, tourism, CDVG, home. Home, we have home, home repair, the infrastructure bank, general, the regular infrastructure bank, T-SIPS, the transportation infrastructure safety improvement program, the small business loan program, land bank demo fund, affordable housing trust fund, grant program. Um, we have multiple different COVID programs that are basically still in existence for people that haven't spent the dollars um that drew down on. That's six different programs there. So all these programs, we need some type of system to try to manage these programs and keep them all under one, one entity. Um, you know, we, we want something similar that the state or PA has, I think, because they have multiple different programs. And you can get in, use a user ID, password. You can log into the system, you can save your application, you can do multiple different things. We don't have the ability to do that with our current IT department and what we have the, what they have the capacity to do. So, you know, and so our applications, when people log on and do that application, they can't save it. So if you don't finish it that night, it's gone. So you, the next day, you gotta go back in, retype what you typed, uh if you didn't have all the information in front of you. So we're trying to make people aware that, you know, have all your information in front of you so you can type it up at one, one sitting, get it done and hit the submit button. We have progressed, um, and we do have the ability to do online, online portal systems, but we need something that um entities, our applicants have the ability to go in, save the application online, have a user ID, password, and basically can control all of these grants under one system and also have the ability to print out spreadsheets for the commissioners when they call and may want to know what entity received what dollars, what year, how much, what the narrative is on the actual program or project. Um, you know, that's very extensive for my staff. Um, when we're getting calls about these things, they have to go in and research what an entity won, what year, what it was, pull the narrative. So if we have a system that we can create to do all this, it'd be much more efficient for my staff and anyone would have access to it to go in and see when they got a gaming grant award, what year it was, what the narrative was, what the project was. It'd be very, very simple. This is something that's been well um overdue and uh we really need to, to progress into the twenty-first century here in this office, doing all the things that we do.
So grant app, venture, custom.
Yes.
Grant management.
Yes.
So who's going to develop this?
Well, what happened was we contacted our IT department and we interviewed about four or five different companies. Um, so we have a company in mind, I can't really name it because the board selects the company, but there were about five different companies that we met with, with our IT department and my staff about our wishing, our wish, wishes that we wanted to see happen. Um, you know, obviously Brooke wants to see stuff for gaming and tourism. Deborah runs our CDVG in home, our home rehab program. All of them pretty much manages the finances on everything. So she'll need to, you know, know on the backend of, of, of the device, how it works to manage the dollars. And uh, that being said, um, you know, the company that we hire, they're gonna create something from the ground up for us that is gonna make it usable for us.
So this is my concern with customers opposed to off-the-shelf. It's really cool when you get it up and running.
Yes.
But then two years down the road, the one that was in charge of it wins Powerball and goes to the other end of the earth and, and no one hears from him again or her. And then there could be a void as to who can then do the next workup on it. So how does one get around that?
That's a great question.
Okay.
I don't know. No, I'm just, no, that has been discussed with some of these companies. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to have the ability to go in and manage it ourselves, right? If something happens, but obviously if something happens to the system, you're gonna have to contact the company who designed it, if there's a glitch in the system, whatever it may be. But we want the ability to go in and uh retrofit or revise or create things that we wanna control. So I think that's the kind of system that we're gonna, we're gonna request. Yeah. But that, I've, I've heard, you know, people talk about, you know, disaster stories where a company goes out of business and then the system's all good.
Their ace programmer.
Yeah, it's gone. Yeah. Yeah, we will uh definitely bring that up in the meetings once we decide to hire whoever the company is.
So as you just indicated, there's many different folks in your staff that wants different agencies funding, right?
That's correct.
So why would the gaming advisory board be the sole funding request agency? Couldn't those other agencies funding up some money as well?
That is a great question and that was in the questions I answered that you guys asked. That's what I said, that if we didn't receive all the dollars, these other programs would have to kick in a portion of these dollars to pay for their service.
So, sorry.
No, no, it's all. I know that big question.
Yeah, the questions we use.
Bing. How's the movie going? Bing.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being kind.
Turn the camera on. Bye, everyone. Thank you for attending.